Okay, I'd like to call the regular session of New Richmond Executive Village School District Board of Education meeting back into session. First thing on the agenda is the additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda.
Mr. Zimmerman, I would like to add an item eighteen. It'll be a voted item. The category will be teacher on special assignment. I'd like to recommend a stipend for PAC dollars for $500 and we'll have more details when we get to that section. But add an eighteen.
So then that pushes everything else down?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Any other additions or corrections? Alright, so it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the amended and updated agenda as described, adding item eighteen to the agenda. So can I add a question?
Also move.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Alright, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Well?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Mr. Dufo.
Yes.
Okay. Recognitions and awards.
What do we want to say? Best part of the agenda. Right. It is. It's all downhill after this, Mr. Rhodes, so.
Sitting high.
I am very happy to be a part of the best.
The Beth Webster Leading Line Award, so please, regale us.
Good evening. This evening I am very pleased to nominate Adree Andy for this month's Beth Webster Leading Line Award. Right over here. You want to stand up and wave? Adree is a two-time Locust Corner Elementary Spelling Bee Champion. He won our competition in the spelling bee vote in fourth grade and in fifth grade, which, you know, if you've ever been a spelling bee, you know it's very nerve-wracking. You put a lot of work into studying the words and trying to, and trying to do the best he could, put his best foot forward. He did that. He has earned straight A's every quarter of every year that he's been in school. He's, he's had perfect attendance, actually, throughout this whole year. Did you know that? And Adree's teachers say that he is very conscientious, very hardworking, and a very curious student. He participates vigorously in lessons and has very high standards for completing his work. And he is also very kind to his peers and very respectful to his teachers. Adree has been a shining example of the best of Locust Corner, both academically and physiatriically, since beginning all the way back in preschool during the 2016-2017 school year with, remember who your preschool teacher was? Yeah, Ms. Grooms, who is now missing? Yeah. So I am very pleased to recognize Adree with this award tonight.
So Adree, you have perfect attendance, straight A's, two-time spelling bee winner. You ready to go to high school next year? Bye, I think Mr. Stewart would take you, so. Really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Appreciate your leadership and all that you bring. And we are looking forward to you staying here and becoming middle school to high school students. So, Mr. Rhodes, that was a wonderful presentation. Wow, that's just so fantastic. We would like to get a picture of this. Adree, would you mind maybe have your family come up and take share picture with us, please? We'd love that. Is he your brother? Yeah. What grade is he in?
He said, "Good job, buddy." Same for him.
Very right, very nice to meet you. Thank you very much. How nice is that? Thanks.
Very well deserved. If I could, I'd give one to all.
And over there.
Yeah, that's right. That's it. Good night, everybody.
You're out of order. Alright, so next up is public participation. We do have one person, Kat Zelak, from Claremont Soil and Water Conservation District, who would like to address the board. So you have about three minutes.
Great. So, thank you all for having me in today. I am the education coordinator with Claremont Soil and Water. If you haven't worked with us before, we are a peer government organization that works with local communities on a wide range of soil and water conservation issues. We were formed in 1943 and have, obviously, things have changed a little bit within the county since then. So we are in the current process of going through a strategic planning process, assessing the community needs to see how we can best meet the needs of those communities. We offer a wide range of services, whether it comes to sediment erosion control, agricultural conservation practices, working with both landowners, whether they're homeowners, private businesses, or the agricultural community. So this is my little sales pitch for you all today, letting you know that we exist. But also, I'm very interested to hear from you all, and I understand that today is not the best opportunity to have a back-and-forth dialogue. But there are several questions that I have for you all, so if you could think about them and maybe get back to me at a future date, it'd be much appreciated. But we're interested to know, for you all as a New Richmond district, what are your top priorities or concerns when it comes to your land management? So, for example, we work with some districts on waste control, whether that is helping to get recycling programs in or food waste diversion programs into cafeterias. We also have helped out with some storm water management on grounds. Obviously, as we've seen larger, more frequent storms, flooding and erosion is a huge concern for everybody across the county. And we can help give technical assistance and suggestions for how to mitigate some of those issues as well. As the education coordinator, I love to give a plug for school-based programs. I do do classroom programs as well as work with administrations to help figure out how they can incorporate more hands-on, science-based programming into their lessons. So I have for you all today, I have a school programs guide that details all of the curriculum that I offer. They're all state standards aligned, so it should be easy for teachers to incorporate that into their teaching practices, as well as a one-page document that gives a brief overview of all of the services that we offer holistically. So again, just think about how you see your land management here, some issues that you might have, whether it's programs that we currently have that we would align well as partnerships, or maybe some new opportunities for further development in the future. Because again, we are here to serve the community. And one thing we have learned a lot through this process is a lot of the community doesn't know who we are. So obviously, that'll be a really big push for us. And again, thank you so much for having me here today.
Appreciate it. Any information you'd like to share?
Yes. One pager is on the questions on the back.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Alright, so the second person that wants to give some public participation comments is Jack Lynch.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having me. Sorry, it's just incredible short notice, just standing by the seat of my pants. Everybody knows about COVID. What COVID's bringing is completely unknown. One of the things that it's bringing more attention to is something called mast cell activation syndrome. It's an incredibly important disease because the reactions are allergies of unknown reasons. Can happen at any time. The reason it's so important to me is I have been a carrier and suffer of mast cell for 56 years. It's hereditary. I have grandchildren that have it. My seven-year-old grandson, they usually don't have the disease process so young, but he had a massive reaction that he ended up in the ER. Why is this important to our school districts? Because he didn't have an EpiPen available to him at the school. We need EpiPens at the school for any type of an emergency like this. 1.3 people die every single day from an anaphylactic reaction. And that's just the ones they know about in the hospitals. That doesn't even account the general population. And let's talk about 9.6 people die every day from an asthma attack. We don't have albuterol that are ready for emergency use. I was literally told that if my grandson went to an anaphylactic reaction because he didn't have an EpiPen with his label on it and with a piece of paper, he would die because there's nothing they can do. There's EpiPens in the school for children who knew that they might have a reaction to peanuts or something like that. But at that time, there was nothing that they could do. This is ridiculous. This is something that has to happen. These children don't know when they're going to have a reaction. We don't even know how many people have mast cells this time. And then that does, you know, with an EpiPen with some type of a standing theme, it would cover all the other children that had allergies. You know, there was just a school that settled an out-of-court thing for a million dollars because a child ate a granola bar that a teacher gave him and he died. And unfortunately, if we're going to start having some type of an emergency medicine, I've been on the fence with Narcan, I really have been. I know the schools in California carry them. I'm actually a family nurse practitioner by trade, so I do have a little bit more extra information on it. But the schools in California are carrying Narcan, which, like I said, I've been on the fence with it. The one grandchild that I'm raising, his mom, not my daughter, but his mom is a profound drug addict. When she overdosed in my house December 30th, 2022, in his bedroom, from fentanyl, we were all exposed. I didn't have Narcan in my house. I'm medical. I know she's a drug addict, and I had no Narcan in my house. The last time she was due, it took three tubes of Narcan. I understand that there's some bill that's going to be coming up about AEDs. I didn't realize the school didn't have them at their facilities. I would really ask you to look deep in your hearts and in your minds and think about this step, and what would you want to have done if it was your child? Wouldn't you want an EpiPen that's available, that someone could give, that could potentially save the life of a child? Wouldn't you want an albuterol inhaler? It's simple. They're covered by insurance. At the disposal, in case a child is having an asthmatic attack and they don't have an inhaler with them, you could save their life. And what if that parent partied all weekend, that kid came to school on Monday and had substance on them, or they got something else they weren't supposed to have, and they've got fentanyl on their clothes?
Thirty seconds.
People get exposed to that, and you could give them some Narcan and save their lives. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Alright, any other public participation? Committee reports.
First one there is Grant. I'll go ahead and take that. We had a meeting last week, last Thursday. Grant had a National Technical Honor Society Ceremony on March 9th. There were 34 inductees. Ten of them was from New Richmond. I'm going to name them. Jacob Shepard, Logan Rogers, Emma Mullen, Riley Woodin, Audrey Burden, Caleb Sanders, Shia Patel, Train Light, Samantha Creland, and Gracie Wallen. We're all inducted into the Hall of Fame, or not the Hall of Fame, but the Technical Honor Society up there at Grant. So good job by them. Then we had a Hope Squad presentation also at our meeting. There were two new positions approved. One was a counselor position. And then there was also a new position for a career-based intervention program instructor. That'll be filled from within for students who are disadvantaged academically and economically, both, and are having barriers to achieve academic and career success. Also, the board worked on reviews of the superintendent treasure. The other thing that I want to talk about real quick is the grant giveback. We got a committee that will be going down to Hazard, Kentucky area the week of April 19th through the 21st, so three days, not the whole week. That's a service learning trip. There's a total of 22 students going and 12 staff. Five of the students are from New Richmond. You'll be seeing probably little flyers on when you order Papa John's pizza or whatever. They're going to have a food and cleaning supply drive April 3rd through the 17th. And drop-off areas, donation sites will be Ace Hardware here in New Richmond, IGA, and Papa John's. So if you order a Papa John's pizza, you'll probably get one of these on your Papa John's pizza box, so. Anyway, that's an update for Grant. Any questions?
On the CBI, you mean, does he have a staff member in mind that you might think would build that?
I think he does, but.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
I have facilities committee. We met a couple of weeks ago at Monroe Elementary to look and discuss the two-step entry way there at the elementary. I believe that work will be starting here after.
Probably back in June.
Yeah. Two new walls constructed. It's some work done in the office there to help with safety. Never been to Monroe Elementary. You basically go in the main door there and you can actually get pretty much anywhere in that building, so. We're looking at putting those two walls up and doing some work in the office. Then we talked a little bit about school dude. School dude is our maintenance custodian request. There were some questions in regards to what that process looks like and the time in regards to when those are put in by staff and then how soon they're put by maintenance or custodians, so. Other than that, that's all I had for facilities.
Had another great safety committee meeting, though it's not a board committee, it's a superintendent's committee. We had three main items. We continued the discussion of the army of teachers and policies. And if we were to continue to venture down this road and we need to create some administrative guidelines in terms of what would these exact requirements be with nice brainstorming session with that. Again, they just cautioned to proceed carefully and thoughtfully. We also talked about the safety grants, which we've been awarded, which has been shared multiple times. Each of our school buildings has received a $100,000 safety grant, which we're happy about. And we also talked about Safety Day, where we'll do this every other year. This is the on-year on September 18th. You'll see that if the calendar hits approved. It'll be a full-day Safety Day. Students will be home that day, but all staff will be here working on safety and security.
Yes, we met on March 15th. Had another round of a review of the coaches handbook and had some healthy discussion about some additions there. One piece, I'm kind of skipping ahead, but it was specific to the pupil activity process for certification, making sure that all of our coaches or volunteers, et cetera, complete their background checks and submit that along with completing the required trainings, including CPR, concussion training, first aid, sudden cardiac arrest training. And inserting some additional language there around reporting that would be outside of the regular initial process. And we also reviewed some early data. Again, we keep track of Title IX update, looking at participation and cost. There's some continued monitoring there, cost per trial, et cetera. And then we talked about the Hall of Fame procedures. Was glad to see this get some focus. Seems like every time it comes up in the community, it's only after people figure out who was nominated and who shouldn't be. So there was a healthy discussion around what that criteria looks like and using homecoming as an opportunity to get the word out, to make sure that we've got nominations and that folks know that it's time to review those applications.
Great. Spot on.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Next on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Mr. Zimmerman, I only have one item to report on this evening out of respect for the item. On February 27th, our community experienced just another devastating and tragic loss. One of our middle school students, Ethan Kane, is so sad that he lost his life on February 27th. It's been, it was challenging some days for the students and staff, but also in the district and also in our community, in a small community like this. Again, you dropped the pebble in the pond, and there are many, many hurdles to be felt. So it's been, it's been really hard. When you go through a storm like this, and Rob, I'm just going to steal a couple of your words from that Wednesday night and talk about that, but you always see, not always, sometimes you see a rainbow when you go through a tough time. And we really saw some light points in our community, in our district, when this unspeakable horror happened. Our students at the middle school were just hit hard, but were fantastic. The staff, again, hit hard, but really kind of, you know, joined together and helped school continue for some days until we got some bit of a bit of normalcy. We had two businesses, Papa John's and Snappy Tomato Pizza, providing lunch for our middle school staff. May sound like a small thing, but for that time, day, that's the one thing they had to worry about lunch. So we got lunch provided. Mr. Wood provided church for a vigil service the following week, which was beautiful. It was just, everything was just, was fantastic. The students who spoke that night, my goodness, adults' greatest fear is speaking in public. I don't know how many students, we hear several, five, six, seven students. So eloquent, so thoughtful in their words. And the words that really stuck with me, one student said, he loved choir. Ethan loved choir. Singing, and his older sister was also part of the choir through, for high school years. And they were choir together, and one student said, they were talking on that Friday, and said, "Ethan, I'll see you on Monday." And Monday never came. And I think that's just a good word for all of us. Sometimes Mondays don't come. And to take each minute, each day that were given to us and lived to its fullest, so. Terrible situation, but some, really some good that came out of it. And I hope I didn't miss anything or anybody. It's never the intent of thanking people, because so many people, surrounding districts reached out to us just to see what we needed. The high school teachers were on there, "Hey, do you need to have coverage? Will we be able to have coverage?" Just, it was a real team effort to get through, to get through that force that we were in. So we can have just a few seconds for a moment of silence. I think so, or Ethan heard the comments that were said about him in the vigil. I'm sure, hopefully somewhere he's smiling down and feels good about the impact that happened in that choir class and also in the hallways in the middle school. What a, what a situation. So, Mr. Zimmerman, that is my report for this evening.
Alright. Next on the agenda is legislative update.
Thanks, Mr. Burson.
Great, thank you for the invite, Mr. Miller. And happy to come and provide a legislative update of what's going on in Columbus. And so I appreciate one young lady talking about my AED bill. And it's a pretty simple bill. It just says that instead of may have an AED, you shall have an AED. So I think for most schools, especially one like New Richmond, it's not going to have much of an effect because you already are supplied with AEDs. But they're not required, and they need to be, especially after what we've seen at Western Brown High School recently, what we saw on the NFL stage a couple of months ago here in Cincinnati. So that's what that bill's about. I think it had a favorable hearing a couple of weeks ago and should continue to progress. As you may know, I'm chairing the education committee, and the speaker has prioritized three of the bills that have been assigned to that committee. And they are House Bill 8, House Bill 11, and House Bill 12. House Bill 8 is a bill that's got a first hearing. It's called the Parent Bill of Rights. And, and so that is a pretty lengthy bill. It would be difficult for me to cover everything that's in House Bill 8 at this time. I would tell you that based on what I heard from that first hearing, it's not ready for prime time yet. It needs some amendments, it needs some work, and we'll continue to, to address that as we go on. House Bill 11 is better known as the Backpack Bill. It's a universal voucher bill. Again, it's a priority of the speaker. And so we have given it a couple of hearings. And so I can tell you that that bill probably will not progress as is. Some of you may have seen recently that there was some, some data released that, that the Backpack Bill would cost Ohioans an additional $1.1 billion. That's not going to happen because we're not going to. I just don't see that bill progressing that in a way that includes $7,500 for homeschool parents. If you're going to homeschool your parent, I'm sorry, if your parent's going to homeschool your child, you're going to get $7,500. For a high school student, $5,500 for an elementary student, that's not going to happen. And so that's a first draft of that bill, and I expect that will be removed from the bill. We'll continue to give that bill hearings. It's had a proponent testimony. It's going to have opponent testimony in eight days, alright? And then House Bill 12 is the school board governance bill. This is a bill that would change the way the school superintendent is changed. It would change the way the Department of Education is governed. And instead of it being governed the way we've always understood it in the past, the governor would instead appoint the superintendent of schools and most of the, most of the responsibilities that the current Department of Education and the current superintendent have would transfer to a governor cabinet type of position. Alright? That bill has had a proponent testimony. It's going to have opponent testimony tomorrow. We're going to find out how many people come out and are really concerned about that. I would, I would also let you know that House Bill 12, that school board governance bill, is actually a companion bill of Senate Bill 1, which is already passed out of the Senate. So it has already been heard in committee. It's already been voted out on the Senate floor. Most of you have probably heard that that bill is a priority of the Senate president. And so we're going to see how that, that bill progresses. If, if it doesn't pass through both chambers and gets signed by the governor by June, it will likely get added to the budget in June. And so there's a very good chance that the school board governance bill will, will make it into law somehow. Okay? And then, I think I heard that you might want to talk about House Bill 1.
Yeah. One or 11, you pick.
What, what's that?
One or 11.
Well, I already talked about 11, so I'll talk about House Bill 1 for a minute. And House Bill 1, I got nothing to do with. House Bill 1, I spoke to the bill sponsor today. I spoke to the committee chair of the House Ways and Means Committee today to kind of give a sense for where that's at right now. And that's another bill that's just not ready for prime time. And so are, is there a consensus among House Republicans that would like to see us generally move toward lower taxes, income taxes in Ohio? That's true. Is there a desire among House Republicans to go from four or five tax brackets in Ohio and get to a flatter tax, perhaps, you know, one or two or three tax brackets? Yes, there's a desire to do that. Is there a desire to somehow, you know, adjust the way we, the way the state of Ohio pays part of people's property taxes? That, that, there is some desire there, but it's all a tangled mess right now, of course. And, and so we'll see how that goes. Yeah, I cannot support House Bill 1 in its current form, and I don't think it has the votes to get out of committee. I, the, the chair of that committee said he's not, he's not bringing it up for a vote in his current form. So I think everybody can kind of relax on House Bill 1. Although I would say, generally speaking, that there's a good chance that especially the lowering of income taxes and the flattening of the number of tax brackets is likely to make it into the June budget. So, that's kind of, that's kind of four or five bills right there. Do you have any questions?
House Bill 111, if those were put up for vote today.
House Bill 111?
House Bill 1 and 11.
Okay.
Those were put up for vote today. Where do you stand? That sounds like.
House Bill 1 I cannot support. Okay? House Bill 11 is in my committee. I'm not going to bring it up for a vote until it gets adjusted. It's not, in its current form, it cannot, it cannot go. I, I can't support giving homeschool parents $7,500 for high school students, $5,500. And, and so I would tell you, though, Tim, that there is a, there is a desire, I think, for more choice in Ohio. I feel that from my colleagues. I feel it when I talk to people around the state. And so I think school choice is going to grow, and how does that happen? I mean, the governor had put out a budget that said that Ed Choice scholarships would increase to 400% of poverty. And so the governor's, you know, believes in it. The Senate president is a big pusher for school choice. And so I can see, it's, it's almost a momentum here in Ohio. How it comes in its final form, we don't know yet. But, but I think school choice is, is gradually going to continue to grow in Ohio.
Mr. Burson, can I, can I ask you, do you know where they came up with 400%?
That was in the governor's budget. And I do not know where his staff came up with that. Okay? But, you know, that's, what's poverty for a family of four? Is that around $30,000?
Oh, it's like $69,000.
Okay. Well, 400%, I, I've heard it said, of course, it depends on how many are in the family, right? So, but for some families, you know, 400%, that's going to get you around, and for some families, maybe $120,000, $130,000. And, and so, you know, everybody needs a little help, and, and that's difficult for people to afford. And so, you know, I think that's where that, you know, that, that push continues to come from. And, and so I think there's a growing desire. When I talk to people around the state, I, I think that it's kind of not really a Republican or a Democrat issue. I, I hear people on both sides, Joe, Joe man and woman on the street, that they want school choice. They want a, a growing movement in that direction. I, I hear that. I don't know if you hear that. But we're going to find out because we have opponent testimony scheduled on House Bill 11, eight days from today. So tomorrow is testimony on House Bill 12, and eight days will be House Bill 11. So tomorrow is testimony on House Bill Twelve, and eight days will be House Bill Eleven.
Mr. Burson, you mentioned obviously some obvious concerns about homeschool. What about non-chartered, unregulated districts or schools, unchartered schools?
Yeah, that's going to be a part of it that we're going to have to continue to look at. I can't commit one way or the other on that. And so, you know, there's going to be a push that those be included. We'll see how that comes out. But I understand everybody's concern on that.
Relatedly, the accountability measures for private schools versus public schools? Is that a part of the conversation? Because I think if taxpayer money's flowing that way, there should be identical accountability. And also, what will be their requirements for accepting special needs students? Students with high multiple disabilities? Those conversations, that has to happen.
Sure. So there's a couple of things. How about the for-profit charters? You know, we've got to be careful that we're not adding to the pockets of for-chartered. I think that if, for-profit charters, thank you. I think we have to be careful about if you accept a student and you accept public dollars for that student, you're accepting them for the year, you know? You can't just get tired of them and send them back after you've accepted that money. And so the other thing is, you know, students with disabilities? If you're going to accept students with disabilities, you need to accept them and take everybody. And so that'll be a part of that conversation too. And you said something else. Testing. And so, you know, I think we're kind of hamstrung over Every Student Succeeds Act. ESSA from the federal government, which is, as most of you know, which came after No Child Left Behind. And ESA has these testing requirements and school district report card accountability requirements that apply to public schools. And so we've got to decide in Ohio whether we're going to force anybody who accepts public dollars to abide by the same ESA rules that the public schools are. And so, you know, I've long been disappointed in what's in ESA. I think the, I hear from people all the time that we're testing our students too much. And so do we need, really need a report card in Ohio that's 20, 30 pages long? Why do we do that? Well, we do it because of ESA. We do it because of these federal requirements. And so we've got to decide in Ohio if we're going to make every school comply with these regulations that are pushed upon us by the federal government.
Because the money flows that way, so should the regulations.
If you're, there you go. I mean, and there's going to be a lot of people who feel that way, that if you're going to accept public dollars, you're going to have to accept public accountability that the public schools have.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the School Board Governance is for the state level, right? And now what's that? So that everybody understands what that does, what does that have to change?
Well, the way the bill is currently comprised, the School Board, the state School Board would still elect a school superintendent. But that School Board, that state School Board and that state superintendent would essentially be in charge of licensing issues, disciplinary, teacher professionalism, disciplinary issues, maybe some order mapping kind of disputes between districts. So some really low-level stuff. And the most of the meat and the heart of what the Department of Education has usually done would then be transformed into this Department of Education. That would be a cabinet-level position. Then there would be two appointees underneath that director position. And so they would really do the meat and potatoes of what the department is doing right now. Most of the people who work in the Department of Education in that building, they would still continue to be employed. They would continue to probably do what they've been doing. They would just report to a new person now, who would be directed, I'm sorry, appointed by the governor.
And the School Board members will all be elected?
Well, not the way the board is currently comprised. Right now, we have 19 state School Board members. 11 of them are elected. And those 11 elected, their map is contiguous with a state senate district, okay? And so, and eight of them are appointed by the governor. Now, for me, I don't know why the governor needs to have this director position and eight appointees. I don't know why he needs both. And that bill is still going to struggle a little bit because there are going to be some of my colleagues who say, you know, I don't want to give the governor more power. I don't want to give the executive branch more authority.
So then would they oversee the adoption of curriculum? So that would all go to this council then, with the governor?
This Department of Education and Workforce, DEW, Department of Education and Workforce Development.
So they would oversee all that?
They would oversee the testing, they would oversee curriculum, they would oversee, you know, many of the students with disabilities, all of the things that, you know, we associate mostly with the Department of Education.
Would hold this specifically, be just a timeline on the process for House Bill Eleven? What you have coming up the next days, weeks, months? Like, when do you think this will sunset?
Well, you know, a lot of this, a lot of this depends on the speaker. And so, you know, I've been told to give it hearings. And so we're going to continue to give it hearings. We're going to continue to proceed as if we're going to have the votes to pass this out of committee. And so whether the speaker, if it were to pass out a committee, we'd have to, if the speaker, speaker still has the ultimate authority as to whether to bring it up to the floor for a vote or not. There is a bill that you might want to check into. It's Senate Bill Eleven. House Bill Eleven and Senate Bill Eleven are very closely tied. They're not companion bills because they're not perfect, exact language comparison there. But Senate Bill Eleven is an expansion of the current voucher program. So it's pretty close. And you know how these things come. If either of those bills, House Bill Eleven and Senate Bill Eleven, if they were to both pass, you know, this ends up being a total war match between the Speaker of the House and the Senate President as to which one, you know, is going to go. Same thing with House Bill Twelve and Senate Bill One. So there's a lot going on right now, folks. I appreciate your concern and I understand it. And so, you know, we'll see. And but you know, the political reality here too, that I just briefly mentioned is, you may have heard that the House Republicans aren't kind of all on the same team right now. And so when that's the case, it's hard enough to pass a bill. But when you have essentially three groups instead of two groups, it makes it a little bit harder.
Can I ask Mr. Burson a question? Do we have an idea of how many homeschool kids we have in the district? Or Mr. Miller, maybe we know that?
Just 97, I think.
97? I can't do that math right.
As I'm sure your House Bill Eleven would likely be.
That's $600,000 or $700,000.
Not, it'd be really bad for our district. House Bill Eleven would be. You've lost back George, and you lived through it, closed the school, laid off dozens of staff. Still having that, and Zimmer closes five years before they were supposed to. Another got punched. We can't cut and cut and cut our way out of this. I mean, I know you sat the seat for longer than I did. It's challenging. Another revenue stream. And I understand the mindset of the Ohio Legislature. I think I read a lot about what's happening in there. The vast majority of districts, vast, are like us. We have good people here, we have good kids. We just want kids to learn and grow and have a good time and matriculate on to the next part of their lives. We're not these indoctrination camps and trying to, you know, get one wrong with parents. I mean, we just want our kids to enjoy school. You know what I'm saying? So I guess it'd be most unfortunate to lump us all in together. It really would be. To go to schools that don't have accountability to the voters.
You're well stating an issue that many people have, for sure. And so, you know, it's, it's, there's some difficult issues because I hear from that side, I hear from the other side. And so it very much is a, it's a challenge that we're going to have to find a path forward, if at all. Yeah, this is no slam dunk for any side on either of these bills. Yeah, I, you know, as far as they, as far as they go, if I had to rank order the best chance of getting to the finish line, it would probably be Senate Bill One or House Bill Twelve just because the governor's obviously going to want that bill. The Senate President definitely wants that bill. And so it's likely to find its way into the budget in order to get passed if necessary.
Really appreciate you coming up.
Absolutely. Thank you much, guys. Appreciate what you're doing. And it's great to, it's great to be from Southern Ohio in New Richmond. And it's a fun place to be able to brag about when I go to Columbus.
We're doing good things here.
I call it the sunny south coast of Ohio. All right, thanks, guys.
I appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is strategic plan.
Thanks so much. Dr. Hollenworth will lead this conversation along with our principals and Ms. Nancy Maltin.
Good evening. I know that we have presented and reviewed our strategic plan several times. Tonight, we want to take the opportunity to update the board and the community on several parts of our district's strategic plan. First, I'd like to emphasize that our building principals have goals and the focus areas of the strategic plan. And those goals are all aligned and designed to help us move forward in the same direction. Each building principal has set professional goals in three areas. They have academic goals, building climate and culture goals, and career exploration goals. Those three areas are aligned with our three focus areas in our strategic plan. Personalized, revitalized, and fiscally grounded. Since the last time we reviewed the strategic plan with the board, a few months ago, we've added a fifth objective to our year two goals. It's in green, the new one. This objective is to establish a district-wide mental health committee to establish priorities and needs for mental health support for staff, students, and parents, caregivers. We have also, to go along with that objective, have three new action steps to accomplish it. The first one, the mental health committee will survey stakeholders, collect and analyze data, and establish priorities and needs for mental health support for staff, students, and parents, caregivers. Second action step, the mental health committee will create a partnership with a one-in-five organization to collect and analyze data related to the determination of needs in the district. And then the third action step, the mental health committee will create and implement strategies to heighten the awareness of and support needed for staff, students, and parents, caregivers. So I just wanted to make sure we outlined the new objectives and action steps. We'll get back to that in just a second. And our principals, three of our principals are here with us this evening to share with us a few updates about their progress and their professional goals, emphasizing those in career exploration. And like I mentioned, this progress directly impacts the mission of our strategic plan. Mr. Roach, do you want to start?
I just want to touch real quick on just a couple of the goals, just to wave chop a little bit. In our career goal, our school is doing a few things a little differently this year. One is we're having a career day for the entire school this year. Usually, we, in years past, we just did it for the oldest couple of grade levels. But that's going to be on May 17th. We're excited about bringing in a lot of different speakers and being able to expose our kids to a lot of different careers. You know, even though they're only in elementary school, you know, we really see the importance of, you know, making sure that they, you know, they know what's out there and they kind of start to get a feel for, you know, what direction they kind of want to go, even though they don't have to commit to anything right now, they're still young. We also have, our students are watching these A to Z career lab videos through the PBS Learning Media website. It's really cool. They're like five or six-minute videos and they take you through different careers. I'm watching them right now, not so I can switch careers. But they're really, really cool videos. And then the other thing is our fourth grade, that Monroe and Locust Corner are both going over to Green Career Center. We're doing a thing called the Big Build Project. And we're really excited about that. We're in our second year doing that, so that's pretty neat. Just academically, to touch real quick, Locust Corner's focus this year really has been to hone in on those K to three literacy scores for us. And I, you know, I'm really excited because our, when we compare our median percentiles in the MAP data from this time last year to now, we've made progress in every single grade level. In kindergarten, we've jumped from the second percentile to the 25th percentile. First grade, 50th percentile, and that's relatively stayed the same. Second grade has gone up by 4% from 46 to 50. Third grade's gone up from 47 to 50th percentile. So we're seeing growth in all our areas. And I think a lot of that is because of our renewed focus on the open court, the reading program. Our pacing guide is very intense, but it's really keeping our teachers on their toes. But it's kind of reestablishing like a really vigorous pace for literacy in our K to three. And so that's basically all I want to touch on.
Good evening. So we have three goals and they're all aligned to the strategic plan. So I just wanted to give you updates on the three goals for Monroe. So the academic goal that we're focusing on this year has to do with achievement. I've always said, everything that I do and encourage our teachers to do is about growth over proficiency. So when I think of achievement, I think of growth. Where do they start, where do they end? And so we talked about goal setting in our building. And I'm really excited to say that 100% of kids, grades K to five, have participated in goal setting with their teachers to talk about where they are projected to be at the end of a testing assessment and where they actually end up. What do you think happened? How could you do better? What, just talking through that process with kids has made a huge impact. So when I look at our data from fall to winter, I'm really excited to say with MAPS, the target goal is 50%. But from fall to winter in grades two through five, I didn't look at kindergarten and first grade because sometimes in the fall, it's just a click of a button test for them. But grades two through five, 64% of our kids met or exceeded typical growth in the area of reading. 69% of our students met or exceeded typical growth in the area of math. And 69% of students met or exceeded typical growth in the area of science. So we are really setting the bar high and we're really pushing our kids to grow as far as they can. Maybe not be proficient, but to grow as far as they can. And I think that is going to translate to the achievement results for our building on the state report card. When we talk about our parent involvement and community involvement goal, that goes into the climate of our building. One of the things that we learned in our survey from last spring was that we were lacking in involving parents and community within our building. So we have a parent and community involvement committee at Monroe who has been working very hard to come up with different ways to bring folks into the building and to highlight things that we're doing. As part of our goal, we talked about having four evening events to bring parents into the building. We have completed all four of those activities now. We started off with our open house, make the teacher nights. We also partnered with our PTO to do a family dance in the fall. And then the other two items that we did had an academic push. Bring the families in, have them do learning activities with their students. Make it fun so they don't know that they're actually doing math at school at night. But I can tell you that our math night had over 200 students in attendance with their families. And maybe that's because Santa Claus was there. But I will say it was a very fun activity for the kids. They did math, they played games, they earned prizes. And all of those prizes were math-related prizes that the kids could play at home with their families. Our most recent one, we had 182 students in attendance for a literacy night at school. It was called Camp Read a Lot. And all of our activities were focused around reading with your children and making it fun. So it was a wonderful evening for our kids. So it's been nice to get the parents and the families back into the building. So it was something I really missed when we were dealing with the pandemic. And then my final career goal, my final goal in my professional goals is the career goal. I'll tell you, we are currently in the planning phases for that goal. But we are planning a full week of explorative, explorative career activities for students pre-K through five at Monroe. And we're going to be using resources from Ohio Means Jobs. We are looking at some of those PPIs videos as well. I, however, am looking for a career change in my next life, not this one. But at the end, we are going to culminate with a career day activity for all students. So we're tentatively looking around the weeks of May 8th, but we haven't quite honed in on that just yet. It's in the planning phase. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Good evening, guys. I'll just give you two big updates on some of our goals of the high school. One being, you know, I
One being an academic goal, if you remember, we discussed this a while back, kind of a two-step plan. Our goal this year is to raise up efficiency scores by 5% in Algebra I, which is not easy. Step one was to use our MAP data both fall and winter to track those kids who are projected not to be proficient and target them with specific individual interventions in the math classroom, working with teachers. That's ongoing. We're confident that we'll reach that number in April when we test those kids. To continue that goal into next school year is the application and creation of our new math class, the Applied Algebra course, which will extend, I think, our overreach of interventions for the kids that are struggling with their math skill. So we're excited to get that underground next year. We're hoping with these targeted interventions we have going on now, we'll reach a goal of 5% raising those scores at the end of the year in the report card. Our second I'm excited about is our career goal. Just today, as a matter of fact, we took all 21 kids who are in our pre-apprenticeship program through the state of Ohio. We have 16 juniors, five seniors, who probably won't graduate the traditional method. So we're using this pre-apprenticeship to graduate them on a career-based kind of plan. So we took the 21 students today down at East Fort Lake Park where they met with the US Army Corps of Engineers and learned about flood planes and flood control. So some real hands-on work there. That falls under the construction and architecture cluster that Sinclair College has approved for us to use through their kind of umbrella system. So we have five seniors who are, you know, kind of were checking the box for them to graduate on time with their grade-level peers with, through this pre-apprenticeship program. So I talked to the kids when, when they came back today, they were excited, they were jazzed up, they get some good hands-on experience for some experts, and we're hoping that might lead to careers for them down the road. So part of the, there was a small change from the ODE regarding the pre-apprenticeship this year was students could only get involved in that cluster if there was a potential of a career while they were doing the pre-apprenticeship shadowing. They kind of moved the goalpost on as after the game started out. But we're happy working with Dan Schinkel, who's our teacher kind of supervising this program. He's got contacts at East Fort Lake Park and all these kids will be considered for gainful employment if they stay through the program and graduate on this, on this track. So we'll look forward to that, so we're excited. So yeah, it was good, it was a good day for those kids to get some hands-on experience in their career, so. Any questions? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So earlier, when I was talking about our objectives and action steps for the strategic plan, I shared that our partnership with the one, I shared that we had entered into a partnership with One in Five organization. And this evening, we're pleased to have with us, Mrs. Nancy Miller from One in Five, to share the data that's been collected and what we'll be using to help us determine needs in our district.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am Nancy Eichelmiller and I'm the executive director of One in Five. One in Five is a local nonprofit who works to put mental health education programs into schools and out into community organizations. We've been in existence since 2010. We work with about 125 schools in Cincinnati doing this work. So as you can see up on the screen here, we did a survey with your student, staff, and parents. We had about 728 students, 169 staff, and 297 parent caregivers complete the survey. So the first slide we're going to look at here is we ask, what's the most common issue that's impacting students? From a student's standpoint, it's stress, anxiety, and depression. The one thing that we really like to look at here, if you ask the students, 38% of them have thought about suicides themselves. The next piece is the caregivers, and they think that the students' major issues are stress, anxiety, and self-esteem issues. And if you ask them how many students think about suicide, only 16% of them think that students think about that. So that's a huge difference between where students are and where the, the care, their parents, caregivers think they are. And then if we look at staff, they think the major issues are self-esteem, depression, abuse, and neglect, and then family problems. And if you ask them, the number is six, they think 66% of the students think about suicide. So those are very disparate numbers. So the thing that as an organization that we really want to concentrate on is what are the, what's the data telling us? Where are the holes and then how do we fill those holes? So the first thing that we're going to look at is support. If we ask students, do they feel comfortable talking to their peer if they're concerned about their mental health? 70% of them say yes, they will do that. They will talk to a peer about their own mental health. Who has supported them? Friends. For students, it's their friends. 68% of them, that's where they're getting their help. And then 59% their parents. And then 7% of them felt like they didn't have any support at all from anywhere. If we look at help-seeking behavior, this is what we're looking at. Do people know what to do when they're in this situation? Do they have the resource, do they know what the resources are? If a friend were to talk to me about suicide, 55% of them said that they would ask for help for that person. 72% would tell an adult if they were concerned about a classmate. Do they feel comfortable reaching out to a teacher or an adult? 52% do not agree that they're comfortable doing that. So that's, that's a, that's a big flag. It's over 50% of the students would not reach out to a student, to a teacher or an adult for help for them if they were feeling like they were in trouble. Would they tell a teacher and another adult if they were worried about a classmate's mental health? 33% of them do not agree they'd do that. So you can see if, if they, if it was themselves, they're much less likely to reach out for help than they are for a classmate. Then we talk about school culture. For students, 30, 23% of them agree that the students are kind to each other at the school. 60% agree that the students at their school get along with each other. 29% agree that the students at the school are respectful of each other. Do they feel connected to their school? 46% of them agree with that. The majority of the students feel connected to peers, 58%. And then if we look at coping skills with students, these are the skills that are going to keep them healthy. 56 agree that they have the tools to deal with stressors in their life. 72% say they know how to practice self-care. And then if we look at respect for the person as a student, do they feel respected? Teachers at the school treat me with respect regarding who I am as a person is about 68%. Students at my school treat me with respect, that's about 30, no, that's 45%. And if the, that my school provides adequate programs and services to promote the success of all students, 59% of the students agree with that. And then if we go to staff, we ask the question about how connected do they feel to their colleagues? 72% feel connected to their colleagues. Do they feel, 83% feel comfortable reaching out to their colleagues for help. 68% agree that the staff help each other through their problems. 75% agree the staff are supportive of each other and 75% agree that administration is supportive of the staff. 53% agree that they do not know the community resources for getting colleagues' mental health help. So that's another area, another flag that we need to educate about. And then if we're looking for help-seeking behavior for staff, 99% would tell us how the counselor at school, if they were worried about a student's mental health. 50% agree that they know the resources to help a student. And only 34% agree that the school has a clear action plan to implement when a, when a student needs help. And then if we look at the school culture for the staff, 80% are proud of the school. 79% agree that the school has a culture of caring for others. 72% agree they feel connected to the school. And you can see the, the numbers at the bottom, 89% agree that they get along with their colleagues. 79% agree they are kind to each other and 76 agree that they're respectful to each other. And then if we look at coping skills for the staff, 82% agree they know how to practice self-care, but only 57% of them are actually practicing self-care. 63% agree they have the tools to deal with the stressors of life. And only 9% agree that the school is actually teaching them those skills. And then if we look at the staff, the respect for the person, 74% agree that they're culturally competent. 39% they would like additional competency training. 20, 37% agree that the school provides adequate programs. And colleagues treat me with respect regarding who I am as a person is about, what, it's about 60, I was doing math there. 33%. And then if we look at support for caregivers, so this is caregivers and parents. The teachers and staff are supportive of students, 77% agree with that. Teachers and staff help students work through their problems, 62% agree with that. 65% they feel comfortable asking the school for mental health resources. Staff and counselor at the, at the child's school are equipped with mental health resources, only 42% agree with that. And then who has supported your child, 83% agree and think that it's them and 45% agree that it's a friend. You can see there's a, again, there's an imbalance between what the students think and what the parents think. And then if we look at help-seeking behavior, 77% are comfortable reaching out to the school for help. 90, 90% agree that they, they could tell a parent, another child's parent if they were worried about that child. If the 13% agree that they would be scared to have that conversation. Then if we look at school culture, 84% of the, of the, of them like the school that their child is attending. 77 agree that the teachers are respectful of the students. Students at the, my child's school are kind to each other, only 34% agree with that. And then they feel connected to the school, 58% agree with that. And then if we look at coping skills for caregivers, 36% agree that they do not have the tools to deal with the stressors that their child is, is feeling. The next numbers are numbers we really like to see. 91% agree that the school should be teaching coping skills and 93% agree that the school should be teaching mental health education. The next ones are about suicide myths and facts. And we have all three different, different segments here. So people who are thinking about suicide won't talk about it to other people. 65% of the students agree with that, 14% of the staff, and 17% of the caregivers. So that is, that most people, if they are, if they're in a suicidal place, they will talk about it. So that the students, 65% agree with that, that is really high. People usually attempt suicide without warning, students, 65% agree with that, and staff is 17 and caregivers is 35. So you can see that's all over the map. Again, that's not, that's not true. People almost always talk about it to someone. People who talk about suicide just from attention, students think that's 15% and caregivers, that's four. If you think someone is at risk for suicide, I shouldn't tell anyone. 11% of the students think that, 2% of staff and 7% of caregivers. People with a mental illness are more likely to attempt suicide. These numbers are very close, 77, 71, and 76. And that number is, it should be, that number should be very high. I know where to refer someone, to refer someone if they, they're thinking about suicide, again, that these are very close, 73, 70, and 70. And then the last thing we ask is, how would you like to be educated? If we're going to do workshops, what would you like to see? And if we look at students, it's a space to sit, to, safe place to talk. That's the biggest thing that we hear from kids is that adults don't give them the respect to actually listen to what they're saying a lot of times. That they, they have an opinion and they feel like they're not, they're not given that voice. Information on mental health problems and learning about ways to cope are the three top ones. If we look at caregivers, it's learning about ways to cope, information on mental health problems, and learning about specific services. And if we look at staff, it's learning how to support students' mental health, learning about specific services, and learning how to support a child, family, or a family member. So that's, that's a quick, very quick review. We are going through the process now of talking to all the individual staffs and I think that we're, we've gone through that process and now we're going back to figure out exactly what's going to happen in each of the different buildings. We believe very strongly that there should be an overarching district direction that you want to go, but that each building looks a little bit different. And now we really, we, we understand what's going on in that building before we make recommendations. So that's, that's where we are right now.
It's broken down by the buildings, to Nancy's point, so each building has their own mental health support team. So the One in Five leaders come in and meet and develop these plans. I think we're done, I think we've done all four now. I think we're finished. We have another mental health summit coming up this Thursday at 2:45 for our district-wide mental health committee. We're going to venture down some of these roads and see what makes a good fit for us. They've had some great ideas for this spring and also some ideas for next year to keep this conversation moving forward. It's been, I don't, feel free to jump in, Joe or, Joe or Jamie, but it's been very well-received. I was at three of the four meetings. It was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hollenworth.
All right, next item on the agenda, item 10, is second reading and approval of 23-24 school year calendar.
Thanks so much. Just very briefly, there are no changes from what was presented at our last board meeting. Some things for our parents who are here in person or watching online. Again, just a reminder, September 18th would be District White Safety Day. Students will not be in session on that day. Also, on November 7th will be a District Professional Development Day. Students will not be in session that day as well. So those are two days that may look a little different for our parents. We're going to have a full week off for the Thanksgiving week starting on November 20th and the rest of the calendar is pretty standard, almost two weeks of Christmas, a week of spring break, the last full week, week of March. We are out on the Friday before Memorial Day and send our kids on their way. Do you have to entertain any questions?
Any questions? On second reading, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve a 23-24 school year calendar as presented. So move. Second. Mr. Wells. Yes. Mr. Paul. Yes. Mr. Sir. Yes. All right, next item on the agenda, number 11, second reading and approval of policies.
Yeah, so we had one big club at the last meeting, so I've separated out the first group policies or the second group policies. This first group, very mundane, generic changes, votes we're doing just to stay compliant with law. The first two, 41-1, I'm sorry, of the AGs, 2430 to 2431A, those are administrative guidelines. Well, doesn't need board approval, but again, those is what the structure to our somewhat recently created Athletic Council. The rest are just, again, just very mundane changes. The one thing I want to point out again to our staff and to our parents is they're going, the state legislature is going back to pre-COVID language for Blizzard Bag or Calamity Days. And that's what this language shows, is that schools can have three Blizzard Bag online portal days, whatever. Districts are getting very creative, collecting, but, so whatever, it's all under one umbrella and the rest of the time, those are Calamity Days. And you still need to determine a number of hours, so that's really all worth pointing out.
Okay. On second reading, it is recommended the Board of Education approve new revised policies as presented. So move. Second. Mr. Wells, second. Any discussion?
I just want to make a, a joke and comment, but I won't. No Blizzard Bags for like Super Bowl Monday.
Correct, no, right, right. We could, but it's one, one or three.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
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 Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And I, thank you. And I separated this next group policies out. These four are clustered together. These are for the deal with the arming of staff, which would give us the authority to do this if we so choose. It's the second reading. Want to hold up for, that way you can have your individual say on this. Even if it passes 324150, it still doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be implemented, it just gives us the authority. If we, if it would be approved, we would need to spend a lot of time developing some administrative guidelines in terms of what the structure looks like. in terms of what the structure looks like, to meet on the bone, so to speak, in terms of if we were to arm staff. I did share with our board that, did the teacher side of it, the, the, the NRTO membership did a subsequent survey some weeks ago. A hundred and one teachers responded and sixty-seven percent or so are opposed to the arming of staff. And that's, that is different than when they were first surveyed. Maybe the recency bias of the evaldi, I, I don't know, because it's about forty-four, forty-five percent then. So at any rate, I, I throw it upon the board for consideration. It's for the second reading and Dr., Mrs. Zoom, turn it over to you.
So upon second reading, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve new revised policies as presented. Sub move? Discussion?
And now it's time for the rubber to hit the road.
That's right. All right, roll call.
All right. Mrs. Story? Mr. Zerwin?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is memorandum of understanding with NRTO.
Had a unique situation at our middle school this year. Thanks for working with our NRTO. Our middle school principal's been gone for some weeks. Evaluations, we're trying to keep those moving forward. Lumina contract, our, our district administrators have helped pick those up. Very appreciative of that. For continuing contract status, this just extends the deadline until May tenth. So we needed a memorandum of understanding for this to happen.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding with NRTO as presented. Sub move? Second? Second, Mr. Wells? Discussion? Okay.
Roll call. All right, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Zerwin?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
All right, human resource items.
Sure, just the consent items. It's that time of year where we say some, guide some very valued and treasured people have been here a long time. Just to highlight, you know, we, we are already well, Mel Potter, a longtime bus driver will be leaving us. That Mr. and Mrs. Smitty will be going back to the next chapter of lives and, and good for them. And also Amy Chol, this, our teacher at the middle school, again, longtime employee here, so we certainly wish them well. Recommendation to hire a couple of class site employees for Monroe. Another couple substitutes. For the fall supplementals, the only change is for Paige McConnell to be paid the supplemental to do the spring musical. We have two stipends to be approved and that is the extent of the consent agenda. Mr. DePaul?
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve items eleven A through eleven. Fourteen, fourteen, all right, fourteen A through fourteen E. So let me read that again officially for the record. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve items fourteen A and fourteen E. E, yes.
As an elder.
Also move?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. All right, roll call.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Just a lot of experience walking up.
It is, it is.
It goes to them.
Yeah.
Or us.
Well, hopefully the next group will step up. You know, when you scoop all, cup water out of the ocean, it goes, goes back in. And that's why that's the app.
All right, item, item fifteen, treasurer's report in action.
Thank you, Mr. Zerwin. For item A, we have the Policy Committee meeting minutes. February meeting to be approved. Item B, we have the regular four meeting minutes for the February meeting to be approved. And item C, we have the facilities committee meeting minutes to be approved February as well. Item D is approval of financial reports. We have one more report in there, as always, to show you just the progress of spending and revenue for the year. Nothing really jumps out. We did get a big real estate payment for March, so I can talk about that more next month. But February's pre-quieted revenue side expenditure goal, as expected, a little bit lower actually, especially on payroll. Well, that's just, you know, less staff and some of the student expectations. Item E is acceptance of donations. We always appreciate those donations. I hope we have three donations included in that on this one there. Item F is the Tax Review Council Resolution. There's a tax review for Herrock County Council that meets once a year. And they want us to appoint a designated for the board of education. And I'm asking the board to appoint the treasurer, because I'd love one of those bands. Item G is the Midnet Appropriations Resolution. So this is a change in appropriations for budgeting. The only changes here are for grants. So we received the safety grant money, so it's four hundred thousand. And we received a little smaller safety grant money for ten thousand, it's a change. It was a vote that added, I think it's been approved in the board's meeting, it's been in that line. Item H is confirming purchase order. They're now, we have the money for these, it's just they come in after the requisition of purchase order. So the auders like to see if we're okay with this. Item I is the letter to intent, uh, letter of intent to purchase a new school bus in this year twenty-four, which would be July one, something had been requested. They have to build these kind of special technical caps, school bus, of this particular order. There's a lot of customization that goes with it, so there's a non-binding agreement. It's a letter of intent, well, purchases as well, it's good enough for us to purchase, so we're not helping in any way. And that's all the updates I have for the treasurer's report.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve items fifteen A through fifteen I. Sub move?
Mr. Wells? Second? Second?
Discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zerwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Okay, on to item sixteen, academic report.
Good evening again. I wanted to take the opportunity to give you an update on the work of our math curriculum committees. The last time I spoke, I think it was last month, I talked about the multiple meetings we've had this year. And the committees, our K five, our six eight and our twelve committees have reviewed our current graded courses study. We have studied the Ohio math standards. We have re-studied the AID standards for mathematical practice. We looked at research-based math, research-based math programs and what programs are being used by many of our surrounding districts. After much research, we identified several programs to investigate in more depth at each of those levels. So last week, the K five committee listened to presentations by four different publishers, all highly rated programs, the top rated on Ed Reports. And the secondary committees together, came together and they had presentations by five publishers. While we listened to each of those, we used a vetting tool that's very specific to help us analyze each program. And the tool had the teachers, the committee members, as they listened to the presentations, rate those programs in terms, in areas of focus and coherence of the math rigor and mathematical practice, usability, how usable and viable those programs would be for teachers as well as for children, whether or not the program's focused on problem solving and not hands or vetting, the use of hands-on manipulatives and models. We decided months ago, as we were going through this process, that at all levels, we wanted students to have more experience with hands-on games and hands-on materials and manipulatives and talking and have dialogue about mathematics. We analyzed the programs in terms of what activities they have for procedural fluency as well as conceptual understanding. Some programs are heavy on conceptual understanding and not allowed to practice. And some programs, the exact opposite, we wanted both. We wanted a program that included spiral review, formative assessments, consumable workbooks for students and supports for both intervention and for enrichment. So the committee will be, the committees, all of those committees, will be talking to finalize the programs they would like to recommend to the Board of Education. I had, I had all of the presentations taped and we'll be sharing those with the board members that are on the CNI committee. If anyone else would like to look at those nine programs, let me know and I will give this to you. Each program has the power involved. I can identify for you which ones they were most interested in, so feel free.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item seventeen, education report.
Yes, I can have, I got a camera over there, it's recording too. Yes. I'm going to try to start a little bit just by going back and touching on some of the stuff that we discussed earlier. I got to see all of the social media outpouring from everywhere. It wasn't just the enrichment community. We had Mason and Anderson sending in things to middle schools to kind of help let people know that they were thinking of, keep them in their thoughts. And I'm still kind of new to the district, I've been here for three months. I've worked with people in this area for about seven years. And I, I just want to say, you guys have something special down here. You all should be proud with the way that everything over the last month has turned out. It was not pleasant, it was not easy, but everyone stepped up, everyone supported each other. And it was amazing to watch. Kind of touching on the one and five a little bit, one of the changes that they noted was some stuff that needed to be done on the website. And we're still working through how to put together a landing page to help consolidate all of that information in one place for people to find. But one of the easiest changes that we did make was the Community Resource Guide. It's a very good, very long list of resources that people can find. And it's hard to find. It's buried in a menu and a menu under a link. And the easiest thing we did was move it to the how do I find section in the top right. Any page in the district, how do I find the Community Resource Guide, it's right there. And last month, this, this meeting that I was at, the speech that I was giving was about some state tournament. Placers and Joey kissing, getting ready to go up to state for swimming, he did well. And in a time since, we had a couple more kids go up and do well at state. Billy Foster and Charlie Jones both placed seventh in their weight class at the state wrestling tournament a couple weeks ago. Charlie wasn't done, she decided to go out and be at the OAC girls state tournament this past weekend. She didn't place, but Kylie Ross, one of our middle school wrestlers, did. She took second in her weight class. That same weekend, Grant Harrison and Samantha Ringhand went to the Adidas Nationals indoor track meet. Grant took third and would have broken the school record if it was a school sanctioned event. Sixty-one athletes, he took third, Samantha took sixth, I believe, out of fifty. Grant was at fourteen feet, six inches, Samantha was at eleven feet, five point seven five inches. So one of them did fantastic and represented the school really well. This week, there's a lot happening. I, I know Monroe has a musical tomorrow night, today's Monday, it's a Wednesday night. Locust Quarter has one on Thursday, softball, tennis, baseball, all start this weekend and track starts next week. So, so get, get out there, sports, get, get chances.
Here, thanks, thanks, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item eighteen is the item that we added at the beginning of the meeting, was stipend for a teacher on special assignment.
Thanks. A, as, as I mentioned a couple times, this meeting, our, our middle school principal's been gone for an extended period of time, for it'll be four weeks. One of our staff members here, Pat Gully, is Adidas student, but has done a tremendous job taking on some extra added responsibilities that instead of two people there, there's really one person, it's her bus duty, mornings, evenings, lunch duty, making sure we have our teachers covered, we're still having the subs shortage, make sure we have classes covered, handling parent phone calls, teacher concerns, things of that nature. It's, it's been very great value added for our history. So I'd like, I would ask the board to approve a five hundred dollar stipend for Patricia Gully for this one month of, of keeping the middle school moving forward.
All right, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve a stipend for a teacher on special assignment, Patricia Gully, for five hundred dollars. Sub move?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Um, the last, last item on the agenda for, for right now is executive session. So it is recommended that the Board of Education enter into executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment employment. It's municipal promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee in accordance with Ohio revised to one twenty-one dot two-two, paragraph one. Sub move? All right, Mr. DePaul?
Second?
Second, Mr. Wells? Roll call.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Zer?
Yes.